Special designated license, designated license administratively approved. The Ridge for the CSC rodeo fundraiser at the fairgrounds on September sixth and seventh. Could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
The Ridge for the-
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Next item is item B, Deb Cotier, Executive Director for Northwest Nebraska Development Corporation.
Good evening, Council, Deb Cotier. I live at four two eight North Shadron Avenue here in Shadron. You should have received a report in your packets. Just a couple of things I would add, a comment or two about the strategic planning that we have contracted with the Golden Shovel Agency to do on our behalf with us. The first peek at some of the survey results will be available to us tomorrow at a, on a Zoom call. From there, we're going to hopefully have an opportunity to hear a little bit about maybe some of their first impressions. They're gonna, they will have had a little bit of time to look at least through those surveys. Then there's also a list of about twenty or so individual interviews that they were going to conduct. And I don't know if any of those will be available. Results of that will be available tomorrow or not, but we'll get our first sort of look at some of the work that they've been doing. This has been taking place sort of in the background since about the the third week of August. So that'll be an interesting report. They will, they plan at least to have a first full report available for us to take to the Board of Directors for N N D C at a meeting in October. That board has been, recently been meeting every other month, but I've asked them to consider a meeting for October seventeenth so that we can have a, sort of a conversation with the folks from Golden Shovel, and they will do a presentation via Zoom to the full board, and then be able to take questions from the board as well. So that's all moving along. The next thing on the, on my report was the workforce development efforts. The, the Career Connections of Western Nebraska are now in the second year doing the the day-long career exploration with sophomores. This time it'll be in Alliance. So it was in Shadron last year, in Alliance this year. So I'll go down and help with that. And then finally, the Heartland Expressway meeting I mentioned, that took place out at the Holiday Inn Express in my report. I've also recently been to Dickinson, North Dakota for the Portstap Plains Meeting, which is the eight-state plus Canada and Mexico sort of umbrella organization. That group met last week, and probably the most exciting part of that trip was a renewed effort, which just fits right in with what we've been talking about for a long time. A renewed effort to include the whole realm of the visitor industry in things that we do, things that we prepare and provide infrastructure for. Roads obviously are critically important for that. But they're building, a few years later than most presidents get, but they're building the Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library in Madora, North Dakota. And that is a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-million-dollar privately funded incredible museum and repository, and they're building it right into the side of the, of the badlands so that it's very little detraction from, distraction from the actual way the ground looks. I mean, it's, we went towards where it will be, and there are huge beams, and there's lots of stuff moving around, and they're doing as much as they can to get some stuff buttoned up to be able to work inside this winter. But July fourth, twenty twenty-six, on the hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-fiftieth, what is it? Anniversary of the founding of the nation, they are gonna open this, this museum. There are not enough places in Madora for this kind of a crowd to stay. They're gonna be staying from Rapid City to Manitoba. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a big deal. It's pretty exciting to see.
Madora, one-hundred-and-twenty-three.
Yeah.
Probably that two-hundred-and-eighty-five-million dollars is probably worth more than the entire rest of town put together.
The, the mayor of Madora told us that there's two camps. Some want, want lots of progress in building more motels and all of that, and then some that don't. And he said, quite frankly, there are seventy people who live there full-time in the winter. And they're gonna get to decide how much they can or should or want to invest because they don't have the infrastructure to build those kinds of properties either. So this motel, or this, excuse me, this Presidential Library is going to manage its own wastewater. It's, it's like building of the future. It's gonna be pretty incredible.
Did he say how they decided on Madora?
Well, Theodore Roosevelt came to Western North Dakota after his wife died to heal himself, is the way he puts it, and absolutely fell in love with it. He had hundreds of acres of property there, some very close to Madora, became very close friends with the marquis and his wife. The last name is DiMores, and her first name was Madora. The town was named after them. They were best friends with Theodore Roosevelt, and everybody agreed that that was his favorite place in the entire world. And so that's where they're building them. And I think Madora probably gave them the property and some other things, but it's pretty exciting stuff. But the, the point of all of this, telling you all of this is, the tourism aspect of this, the visitor industry is now, we're now talking about the T R triangle, which is the Presidential Library, Mount Rushmore, and of course Yellowstone National Park. That's a big triangle, and you need good roads to get to any of those. And we think with a proper amount of push, those three entities will work together. At least the, the two federal places, the Mount Rushmore and Yellowstone, they market together all the time. And they'd be really foolish not to include the Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library. So the opportunity for them to pave Highway eighty-five north of Belfus, South Dakota, it's a U.S. highway, all the way up to I ninety-four, which is the Theodore Roosevelt Expressway. It's gotten a lot more publicity, a lot more traction, a lot more people recognizing what a big deal this is gonna be. To say nothing of the number of oil-related trucks and traffic and, and safety issues that have been there, so. Interesting stuff, good meetings. We, we continue to make the federal dollars a target across the entire Alliance or the corridor. We don't see it being something that individual states can accomplish on their own, and that it has to have some continued support from the federal level, which we have thankfully been able to, to get from Senator Fisher, at least. And so we'll, we'll keep working on that. Back to DC again next spring. It's one of those things that you, you not only need to keep your face in front of the elected official, but chances are there's gonna be brand-new staff in someone's office, or most people's offices. They change pretty regularly, so. We, it was interesting. We've, we've been doing these meetings for years and years, and I suppose partly because it's an election year, but we had video messages from probably thirty Congress, congressional members, House of Representatives or Senators. It was just crazy, the number of them that sent greetings and messages, how important this four-lane highway is, so. Yeah. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if anybody has any. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-six and move forward its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Mark for Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-six is to accept and approve a quick claim deed from the Shadron Public Library Foundation for the south fifty feet of the north half of Lot Two, Block Forty-four, Western Town Lot Company's third addition to the original town, now the city of Shadron, Dawes County, Nebraska. We have representative from the Library Foundation. Please, if we have any questions, we can address them to you, but you gotta introduce yourself-
Okay.
And tell you where you live.
Susie Jones, Shadron, Nebraska, President of the Library Foundation. And this is just one more step in our progress towards the preservation and expansion of our city library. And even though it seems like it's taking forever, it's gonna take a little bit longer too, but we wanted you to be in possession of that property, so. They just came, we've completed the roofing project, and of course clearing the lot and getting it shovel-ready for the, with this grant. And they finished the roof in short order, first started the first part of May and had it done in less, in over a week, and, and had a little rain in between, and nothing leaked, and it's a thirty-year guarantee with an insulated roof, so it's a wonderful improvement for the library. Right now, the bids have gone out for new windows for the north side and the front and the east of the building. The south will be where the proposed addition will be, so we won't do anything to those windows until that project starts, which is a ways away yet, so. We're making good progress with, we're still out gathering pledges and, and getting commitments from folks and, and hopefully be visiting with some architects soon, and, and so things are, things are moving, so. Hopefully, you will all continue to support us and keep it going, so we're glad to do this for you. Any questions?
No, that's great news.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. No other questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Someone like to introduce?
I'll introduce Resolution, let's see. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-seven and move forth its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Joe for Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-seven is to approve application for a specially designated license for Compass Group USA for reception of Shadron State College Ballroom and Scotts Bluff Room on Friday, October fourth, twenty twenty-four. And we have a representative.
Yes, sir. Hey, everybody. My name is Carl Kegrel. I'm the Director of Dining Services at Shadron State College. I live at seven-ten-and-a-half Bordeaux Street in Shadron.
Okay. And kind of a background, you were here and heard we administratively approved the special designated licenses, but this is a new application from a new entity, and that's the reason the first time around, so. Anyone have any questions about what's going on on October fourth?
The, the foundation is having a reception at the, at the college.
And that's called, what, here?
Pardon me, sir?
The, the day, that football game that weekend is-
It's a homecoming weekend.
I think homecoming is two weeks later. This is-
Oh, it could be.
This is Hall of Fame.
Yes.
Yeah, the Hall of Fame.
They all run together for me.
It's all just food.
Well, thank you. We try.
So anyone have any other questions? If not, could you have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-eight and move forth its adoption. I'll second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Joe for Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-eight, which is to establish the funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five. That's a pretty much repeat of prior years. However, I believe that the Transportation Fund is a new fund this year, if memory is correct. So anyone have any questions about what the funds are, what they mean? When I took, of course, I took a lot of accounting classes, and I, I don't remember the term fund accounting ever coming up, and then I got out into the CPA world, working in small towns, and we quickly learned what fund accounting, but every once in a while somebody would leave off the D and say fun accounting, and we said, it is not. So, with that being said, in the world of fu, fund accounting, we have all these funds. So could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Someone like to introduce item number?
I'll introduce Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-nine and move forth its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Joe for Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-nine to approve an additional one percent increase in the city restricted funds authority for twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five. Mark did ask me some questions, and he said he asked Michelle about this, and it's, even though you might not use it, there's, there's a form and the budget forms that are actually filed with the state auditor's office. If you have seventy-five percent of the members present at the meeting, you can add to your restricted funds, not necessarily the amount that you're using all the restricted funds, but it gives you that authority. So by increasing that base, it might come in handy in the future. Would that one percent be a deal-breaker in the future? Probably not, but it's, historically, we've always done that. All, every government entity that I've been in contact with during my practice here in Nebraska has always utilized that.
Doesn't hurt us not to do it, and, you know, the state loves to come up with creative ways to cram down political subdivisions budgets, so we'll take all we can get to give ourselves the breathing room as we can get.
Could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Okay, at this time being six-twenty-three, we will open a public hearing to consider the annual budget, final tax levy for the annual budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five. Michelle, could you come up and address the council of where we're at, what we're asking for, and then if members of the audience have any questions they can ask?
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Michelle Stoke. I represent the City of Shadron as the Finance Officer. We're working on the- So we have the final tax levy, and it's going to be set at three-point-four-one percent. I'm sorry, total assessed value of property differs from last year's assessed value by three-point-four-one percent. The tax levy is set at point-three-nine-five-mills. And cause the tax rate to be actually at point-four-zero-four-six-mills.
And by state statute, our limit is point-four-five.
Yes, and the dollar amount that was set up so that we did not have to do the, the combined, the joint.
Pink postcard dilemma?
Pink postcard meeting. Yeah. We managed to stay under that by about, what, forty-five dollars? So we squeezed that rocket till it screamed. Any questions?
Well, my guess is for most people, taxes will come out about the same because there's not a lot of difference between last year's levy and this levy, and there's probably some adjustments to valuations.
Valuations weren't very, very hot, didn't change by much either, so.
So does anybody have any other questions or comments? Mark said he had an item to correct, I didn't get a chance to-
It's actually in the budget, so we can, did you wanna talk about it when we're talking about the actual budget passage, or?
Yeah, we can wait to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone, no, no one has any other questions? We'll close this public hearing at six-twenty-seven. Takes us to item H.
I'll introduce Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty, move forth its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark for Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty, which is to set the final tax levy and property tax request for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five. And as Michelle in the hearing noted, that the the tax rate which would levy the same amount of property taxes as last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of property, would be point-three-nine-five-zero-one-seven for a hundred dollars of assessed value. The City of Shadron proposes to adopt a property tax request that causes tax rate to be point-four-zero-four-six-seven-seven for one hundred dollars of assessed value. And based upon the proposed property tax request and changes in other revenue, total operating budget of the City of Shadron will exceed last year's budget by thirty-four-point-three-seven percent. Now, that should probably have some explanation of what's in, what's in this budget that was in, not in others, so.
Well, we received in our spending, our budgeting for a couple of very large grants. We have the, most of it appears in Fund Thirteen. We have the, okay, hang on. There it is. We are budgeting for- Wow. There it is. Okay. We are budgeting for all of the transfers that we had in the front of the budget book that we were talking about, transferring from general fund into other funds that added up to just over nine-hundred-thousand dollars. And we have just under, we have three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand remaining on the brownfield grant. We have a snow removal equipment grant that has yet to be closed out. That's three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. And we are budgeting for the War Memorial Park from game and parks that grant of just of a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. That's just the revenue adding up to eight-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. We got cowboy gra, the Cowboy Trail that we're finishing, and, and then all of the grants for the little things that we have for capital improvements in, in Fund Thirteen. The game and parks, the War Memorial Park match of seventy-five thousand dollars, police vehicle, emergency sirens, just a number of the, of, of things. So we are budgeting down deep into reserves because we have healthy reserves, and we just need to get some of these projects completed. And we felt that if we budgeted for them this year, if we don't get them completed next year, at least we'll be able to rebudget remainders and bits and pieces for next year.
To, to the listener, it seems like, why are you doing that? But I always go back to the basic premise of city government cannot spend. There's two major things you gotta watch out for. You don't, can't spend more money than you have.
Right.
Unless you're bonded, but, and you can't spend more than you budgeted for.
Right.
So you have to budget aggressively, I would call it, so that if the revenues are there, you have the authority to, to spend it. If you don't do that, you can get around that by doing amended budgets, but that's a lot more work.
We've done a pretty good job of not having to do any amended budget amendments in the last ten years.
I'd rather budget it for the first time.
Yeah, better to just have it on there and not need it than-
Works better, yeah. So, yes, it did grow. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah. That-
I think that was under what?
Would you repeat Deb's question?
The, oh, yes, Deb, Deb Cotier wanted to know if the-
For the tape and everything else.
Fire truck was budgeted in there, and that's in the Public Safety Equipment Fund Twenty-nine. That's one-point-four-million dollars that we're getting, and we'll probably spend, that's a hundred percent grant, so we'll spend every bit of that. You know we will.
Yeah. I, I caution people now, don't wait for the truck, truck to arrive next year. It takes a while to, to order those things, for them to build them.
And we'll just keep rebudgeting it so that when it comes in, we'll be able to pay for it right away, so.
Okay. Any other questions that anyone has? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Okay, we are here at item I, considering ordinance number fourteen forty on its third and final reading. Ordinance number fourteen forty is before the council for its third and final reading. Please read ordinance number fourteen forty by title.
An ordinance to adopt the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five budget statement to overturn the annual appropriations bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, directing the publication of this ordinance and prescribing the time when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect. directing the publication of this ordinance and prescribing the time when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
I move that ordinance number fourteen forty be approved on its third and final reading. I'd second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Joe. Is there any discussion?
So, Mark, um, Councilman Graves came in to the office this afternoon and had a question about one of my numbers, and that's why, this is why I like to have a number of sets of eyes looking at this budget, so that we don't make these mistakes. It is in the Transportation Department. It is account number forty-one thousand. The formula was broken and had calculated twenty-seven thousand dollars for FICA tax. It should have been ten thousand, six seventy-seven, ninety-seven. That changed the bottom line to two hundred and forty-six, four thirty-seven, and sixteen cents. It also changed, um, since it's a formula grant, it also changed the federal contribution, the state contribution, and the local match, but by the same amount. So, actually, it didn't change the fund at all, the fund balance. So, um, the cash balance remains the same.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. I should've spent more time reading this, but.
No problem.
These wonderful ragweed allergies.
Weather's high on this.
Eyes get tired quicker.
It puts me to sleep, too.
Pardon me?
The budget puts me to sleep, too.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
And that's adopted as corrected, right?
But of course.
I declare ordinance number fourteen forty approved on its third and final reading. Ordinance number fourteen forty has been read by title three times. The question is, shall ordinance number fourteen forty of the city of Shatteren, Nebraska finally pass? Can we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Ordinance number fourteen forty is hereby passed and adopted.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number J.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one and move for its adoption.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Shane for resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one, um, which is a change order number one for Wynn Contracting LLC for the concrete removal and replacement, the apron project at the Shatteren Municipal Airport. Tom, Janet, would you, uh, address this change order?
There, there was a, a memo where a change order put into the packet itself, and the, the biggest thing or the gist of it was we were anticipating six inches of concrete to be removed and replaced. It ended up being an eight-inch chunk. And so, what they ended up doing, what the difference is, is that instead of it being, uh, the sixty-three hundred dollars, it ended up being eighty-four hundred dollars, based off of the unit pricing that was provided for the bid tabulation or a twenty-one hundred dollar increase. And that's the, the change for it, and I believe they're asking this to be the final payout, too. Is that correct, Janet, on this one?
Yes, the change, the change order is.
Change order, yeah. And so, that, that should be all, the change order would be the estimated, new estimated cost would be the forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy cents.
Yeah, the change order is an amount of two thousand, eighty-two dollars and seventy cents.
Was that change from the memo?
The change order is.
Is twenty eighty-two.
Yeah, it's tw- two thousand dollars and eighty, two thousand eighty-two seventy. But it's just, um, the removal costs them more because of, of the thicker concrete. But then, yeah, and the pay requests.
Okay, when, when I looked at this, things always click in my mind, right? I said, okay, they had to remove more concrete than they anticipated, it's thicker, so I know that's harder. But the reason that they said, wouldn't say put an extra two inches of base and compact it, it would probably cost more than just filling with eight inches of new concrete.
They could've asked for more money in other areas, but they just took it out in the removal.
Okay.
I mean, they could've.
Put in
They put in.
Two inches more than we planned.
Yes.
So, but trying to work around that and fill it in with, and compact the the base, it would've probably been more work than it was worth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's kinda what I saw, so.
I mean, they could've, they could've asked for more money in the base, and they could've asked for more money in the concrete, and then so, but they just took the money in the removal.
Okay.
Nice and simple.
Yep, they simplified where they got their dollars.
I was perusing the Spearfish City Council agenda, noticed they had a change order for over five hundred thousand dollars on one of their projects of two thousand, sounds pretty, pretty reasonable.
Don't have a project that big, though.
Yeah, it was a ten, ten million dollar project.
Yeah, yeah.
Could use a couple ten million dollar projects.
Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-two and move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Miles, seconded by Mark for resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-two, which is progress estimate number one and final submitted by Wynn Contract- Contracting for the concrete removal and replacement for the apron project at Shatteren Municipal Airport.
And then so on this, you see the change order and the two thousand dollars increase the contract amount from thirty-eight thousand to forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. And so, the contract is complete, um, Wynn did a nice job out there. They did it very quickly, once they got their barricades. So, the job is done, but it's a nice job.
Wonderful.
All done.
Love to see it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Okay, item number L. We don't have any background information, but we don't know what the background is. Donna Rust, our city clerk, is retiring the last day of September, and so we need to appoint an interim city clerk. And I would make a motion that we appoint Katie Parks, who is the deputy city clerk, as the interim city clerk uh, for this position, and in lieu of our, because of the fact that she will have additional duties as interim city clerk from what she has as the deputy city clerk, we will add five dollars per hour to her pay as set by the, for the interim, for the deputy city clerk pay.
I would second that motion.
Okay, I made the motion, seconded by Miles. Is there any discussion?
Katie, are you willing to accept?
Yes.
Okay, always, always nice to check first.
I, I did call it. A- after the attorney, uh, city attorney gave me the okay to do that, so. Uh, so, that being said, could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Okay, um, I have to deal with, um, reviewing the applications for the city clerk position. Um, I had, in prior discussions with city manager, um, and maybe a couple of you, that I suggested it be composed of, um, two council members and Tom, the city manager, and Bev Bartlett, the human resource officer. But it's up for grabs. I had indicated that, um, I'd be willing to be part of the search process. If someone wants to arm wrestle me and take that position, you'd probably win, because I'm an old guy.
Uh, does the vice mayor wanna take that position? I think vice mayor gets right of first refusal.
Right, I think if, if George is already on there, and especially this time of year, I'm about to be my most busy time of year, I would rather allow one of you three. I'll do it if we need to, but I, the timing, and with the mayor already part of it, it'd be nice to, to let somebody, that one of the council members be there. But I'd ha- I'll happily do it, unhesitatingly.
Just my quick thought on is, since, since some of the senior council members are, are leaving, Miles and, and Joe, not that I think you would be bad at that, but you won't be present for the, uh, I, I think, one of the, the existing or remnant council members.
Remnants.
Leftovers.
The tattered remnants of the Shatteren City Council. That's a good way to put it. No, I, I, I would agree with it, I think, uh, I think it needs to be the mayor, and then it should either be Shane or Mark, and they can arm wrestle her, who doesn't have to do it? It's a lot of work.
It's a good time.
It's up to you, if you wanna, if you're.
I'm on the search committee for the hospital president, so, there you go.
All right. Weasel out of one, you get the other.
Shane, okay. Okay, that'll be composed of.
Mayor, I would move to appoint a subcommittee for the city clerk search process consisting of the city manager, the city human resources officer, Mayor George Klein, and council member Shane Shepherd. I'd second that, if that's what you're looking for.
Okay, motion by Miles, seconded by Joe. I'll repeat to be the city manager, human resources officer, myself, and council member Shane Shepherd.
Carrie?
It's on something else, so you can, you can vote on this.
Okay.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Okay.
Carrie Rumpf, I'm gonna take my Shatteren red hat off and put my Northwestern Nebraska Tourism hat on just briefly before you guys wrap up your meeting. Um, Nybrow Valley Vineyards SDL, it's on the agenda as being for October seventh, twenty twenty-four. That is not the correct date for Harvest Moon Fall Festival. It is October five. So, just make sure that their SDL has the proper pa- date on the paperwork for them, please. I would appreciate that.
Thanks for seeing me.
Thank you.
That was one of the things that was, um, on the consent agenda, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thought you were gonna step up.
I don't think we need any action. Okay, um, I would like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by me, seconded by Shane. Um, anyone have any other questions? I, I did have one question, um, the TTG Enterprises, and there was a, a note attached to it that the labor part, they wanted to get paid ASAP, because the total invoice was sixty-five hundred ninety-one dollars and twelve cents. But the labor part, and, and the rest of it was like computers and that type of thing. And I was wondering why we're not dealing with the whole thing, or, or gonna deal with it on the twenty-sixth? Special.
Jen Wool, uh, the accounts payable clerk for city of Shatteren. Um, I, when I, they turned in that work order, they asked that the, that sixty-five hundred dollar one be taken care of right away, because a lot of that was put on a personal credit card from the company, and you needed to get that bill paid, and the rest will be on the next budget. That's why it's not actually in the claims list, but we needed to print the check. It will be on the next claims list, and it'll be marked.
Deal with on the special meeting at the
Correct.
Twenty-sixth.
Correct, and all the other, um, things associated with that project will be on that meeting, too.
Hey, anyone have any other questions? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. City manager report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, just reminding everybody to make sure that they're still working on any kind of, uh, worthless vegetation, overhanging branches. Just reminding on the trash, make sure that they're taking care of their areas, help out their neighbors. Just as a reminder, uh, the street shop does have the, uh, dial-a-truck at four three two zero five two eight, uh, which they are more than welcome to use to help out, to take care of some of these problems, uh, areas that they have it. And then the second thing is, is just to remind the council of the, uh, special council meeting on the September twenty-sixth. I don't know if we've settled on the exact time.
Yeah, I did, we talked about four o'clock, and we maybe talked about four thirty, and, you know, and Miles works till four, and if we wanted four fifteen, so that he wouldn't have to leave early.
I'll work until four thirty, if we could do, I could make it if it was four forty-five, or you could pass it without my vote, as long as you have a quorum, too. I don't mind. That doesn't hurt my feelings.
Or we could do it at four forty-five.
None of those make any difference to me, if I can make any of those.
Why don't we make it four forty-five, then Shane can get an extra half hour of work in.
Right.
So, four forty-five on September twenty-sixth, is that correct?
Are you implying that I don't work?
You, you said you, you have so much power up there at Great Plains that you can just take off whenever you want. Don't put that in the mix.
Doesn't mean meeting with HR tomorrow.
Okay, four forty-five. Um, so be it. I, I don't think we put out a legal publication with any of the times yet, so, okay, that's good. Okay, we don't need item P, resolution, to excuse any of the council members, since we're all here. Council closing comments, we'll start with Miles.
Well, I'm glad to, uh, have another budget out of the way. Uh, very happy with this budget, and every, oh, it seems like every year, our process for computing the lid and our restricted funds and all those things changes just a little bit. Um, but I'm, you know, every year, we work our way through it, and glad to, you know, do the things like the little, the little tricks and the, the little hoops to jump through, like the one percent increase in the lid on restricted funds. Uh, just, you know, it is what it is, it's, it's all just part of the process, and I'm glad to see it done. Glad that we've gotten it taken care of early, uh, that we're not doing everything at the last minute, just uh, thanks to everybody who participated in the process, thanks to department heads, thanks to city managers and clerk, deputy city clerk, everybody. Our finance officer, most of all, for all the long hours put into, uh, making sure we have a really solid budget. And like I said, I mean, we don't, we haven't had to do very many, perhaps not any, budget amendments over the last ten years. It's one of the things, the city's very strong, and I'm proud of that, that we have a nice, solid budget process that we go through every year, and everybody gets on the same page, and we get to completion, we get a lot of, and a lot of very exciting for this budget, capital projects coming for next year, so. Thanks to everybody involved, congratulations to everybody involved, and, uh, here's to a great fiscal year coming, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I just wanna reiterate what, uh, Miles had to say about the budget, it's an arduous process for all the departments to, to come up with. It's an arduous process for all those departments to, to come up with what they're gonna, their expenses are. And, uh, they do a good job, uh, reining them in. It seems like they're, uh, similar every year, um, so, so that's spectacular. And that we get it done so early. I noticed at Spearfish, I know I keep referencing them, but I, I saw that they're just getting their audit done. So, we're, we're ahead of the game, and it's, it's nice that we can get that resolved, uh, sooner than later. Also, the, um, Gray Eagle Warrior Challenge is this weekend. It's a, it's a nice, uh, function. You bring your families out there and watch people compete, or compete as a group or an individual. So, uh, hopefully, some of you will participate. Yeah, um, just like to say, uh, um, you know, it's getting dark, it's starting to get dark a little earlier, unfortunately. So, watch out for kids on the street. Um, and, uh, remind everyone that October fifth is the, uh, Harvest Moon Fest here in Shadrin. Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll continue to echo my, my thanks to the city staff for getting through the budget process. That's, uh, I really enjoy it. I appreciate the staff for enduring my questions. I, I enjoy watching the budget kind of form, and it's, uh, it was a real loss of innocence when I started to understand what it takes to make a budget. I thought they were much more straightforward. That couldn't be further from the truth. So, that'll always change my perception of everything having to do with government, having been through some budgets now. And I'll always be grateful for that. Uh, I wanna thank Katie Parks for accepting the interim deputy city clerk, or city clerk position while we make a pretty big transition here in Shadrin. I wanna thank, uh, the Shadrin Public Schools for an incredible homecoming. Sounds like that was a phenomenal success and a lot of fun for everybody. And, uh, staff at the Aquatic Center, as, it was a big week of partying, and, uh, my youngest had her pool party again. And, uh, that facility is just incredible. And so I'm always grateful when we get to use it and watch the kids playing there, and watching the staff be so helpful in the clean, clean available space. It's just, uh, very gratifying to be a part of. So, again, thanks to the whole city staff and their facets and for everything that you do.
Okay, um, I will not be participating in the Gray Eagle Warrior Challenge.
I thought you were the Gray Eagle.
But, and thanks for all the, those were really good comments. It's probably one of the better diversity that we've had. But, um, just wanted to mention that some of us, um, you know, Mark was there, Joe, Tom, myself were able to meet the State College System Board when they were here last Tuesday. Um, I wanted to mention the, on Tuesday, October first, the Brownfield Public Conversation to be held at the Platte Valley Community Room from nine AM to ten-thirty AM. And it says you got a light breakfast and a community conversation, so, uh, it's a big grant. Um, if you have any input, or just, it'd be nice to hear the people that are working on this documentation for this grant and how it's going to help us and all that good stuff. So, uh, that's coming up. And then, since they had breakfast on Tuesday, on Wednesday, you can break for breakfast at the WCHR, the Third and Shelton, back in the parking lot, and get a breakfast there and pick that up. And we don't have any place for breakfast on Thursday. And in conjunction with the festivities on October fifth, there's the open art thing on Friday, the, um, the fourth, uh, open, open frontier fest, creative arts and district showcase. And I've got that flyer here in my information, if anyone wants to see it, so. That's the end of my comments. So, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second that.
I made the motion, Shane seconded it. Could we have roll call, please?
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.